Well, good evening. Today is August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. You are at the Rowan County Commission meeting. We are grateful that you're here tonight, and we're looking forward to a good evening. And so we begin our meetings every two weeks with a couple of things. It's been our tradition that we begin with what's called a solemnizing prayer. In a solemnizing prayers, we're going to have our chaplain, Chaplain Taylor, come forward. This prayer is for the commissioners. It's not for you. You're welcome to listen along if you like, but what we do, we take very seriously because we want to do the very best thing for the folks of Rowan County. So we seek wisdom where wisdom is offered. So if our chaplain will come forward, commissioners, we'll get started.
Welcome to you tonight, and we thank for the opportunity and previous to pray for our county commissioners. We do thank for them and the work they do, Lord, and I thank for the many, many hours that they put in. A lot of times, the public doesn't know all the time they put in and the effort they put in to have us a better county, dear Lord. Pray you give them the wisdom they need tonight, and pray you bless this meeting. People that we have to come to you and ask you for wisdom. Hallelujah, salve us now. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Right now, we're going to have a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Chaplain Taylor. All right, commissioners, I've got one addition to the agenda that was given to us regarding sole source, sole, sole source purchase for print elect. We'll add that as item AK on our consent agenda, so that'll be the last item, item AK. Are there any more additions or deletions we need to know about? All right, hearing none. Then, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then we have the consent agenda, which we added one item to. Motion to approve the consent agenda is amended. All right?
Second.
In a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we will move to special recognition. So usually, in political settings, when a room is full, it's because someone's in trouble. But sometimes, that's not the case. Sometimes, we're here to celebrate, and that's going to be what we're going to do here tonight. So commissioners, if you'll join me out front, we're going to welcome some hometown heroes here tonight, okay? So ladies and gentlemen, tonight, we would like to welcome a Rowan County Little League eight U All-Star State Champions. Would you please give them a round of applause? First thing we'll do is we'll call up the coaches to kind of join us here. And so we're going to have Coach Jeff Barn, or he's manager, Jeff Barnhart, and then Coach Ashley Poole, Coach Hillary Nixon, and David Brown. And if you'll give these coaches a round of applause. All right, so let me give you a little snapshot of these, these young ladies here. The Rowan Little League All-Stars are selected from girls that play in the Rowan Little League, and they play over at Salisbury Community Park over on Hurley School Road. Once they're selected to the All-Star team, they start training for the six-to-eight-year-old North Carolina District Two Tournament of Champions tournament. This is a single-elimination tournament. Boy, that's a lot of pressure, isn't it? After they won the District Two Championship, they started training for the Old North Carolina Championship Tournament of Champions. This is a double-elimination tournament, and this is far as this age group is allowed to go. We've seen our older ladies head off to National and World Series, but this is as far as these are allowed to go, because I think they have a curfew, don't they? Is that it? And so they swept both tournaments. So here are some of the stats. I want y'all to hear this. Now, how many, how many of your parents? How about standing up if your parent's here tonight? There you go. Parents of the team members, look good. Give a round of applause for them. So if you're parents, you understand the accomplishment, but let's just talk about some of the competition these young ladies went through. The District Two Tournament was played here in Salisbury. On June twenty-fourth, they played the King Little League, and they won a score of twenty-three to zero. Twenty-three to zero. On the twenty-fifth, they played Davie County and won twenty-two to... There we go. You're catching on. On June twenty-sixth, played Northwest Forsyth County and won nineteen to zero. On June twenty-seventh, let's hear it real loud this time, East Surrey County, you won fourteen to... Now, I, I did a little math on there using my head, and I, maybe I should have used a calculator too, but those four games, they won a combined score of seventy-eight to zero. Seventy... Were you playing football or softball? I'm not real sure. Well, then you moved on to the North Carolina State Tournament, and the first game, you played East Lincoln County. You let, you let them in the game at least. You won six to two. McDowell County, you won twelve to nothing. On July sixteenth, you played Pitt, and you won a squeaker there, six to five. What happened? Yeah, six to five. Yeah, they're tired. And then East Lincoln County in the championship game on July sixteenth, and the ladies brought home the hardware, winning eleven to four. And so we just want to say, as representatives of Rowan County, how proud of you we are. And when we look at the older ages, it appears we're loaded for years to come. Isn't that the case? I know when the girls won the Second World Series here, that I called Catawba and Livingstone math departments to try to get them to calculate the odds of a Little League girls team. There's twenty-five thousand of them in the world, by the way, what the odds were of winning it twice. So that, that's kind of easy to figure out. It's, it's one out of twenty-five thousand, and a few years later, winning it again. But all those other years that we were either in the championship game or right there, and they didn't have the hardware to calculate the odds. They were so large. But we were able to declare that Rowan County had the most successful softball, girls softball team program in the world for a number of years. And so you guys are carrying on the tradition, and that's a great thing. So I want to call out the names of each of the, the young ladies, and if you would come forward, I'll call out your name and the position that you play. And then we're going to have these folks. I'll have Mike hand, we've got these proclamations for you, and maybe we'll have Ms. Judy.
Yes.
If we'll have, we'll have you read this proclamation. Is that okay?
Yeah.
And then we'll start bringing you guys up, okay?
This is great, because he never gives me the microphone. This is a proclamation from the Rowan County Board of Commissioners honoring the Rowan Little League eight and under All-Stars State Champions. Whereas the Rowan Little League eight and under All-Stars team under head coach Jeff Bernhardt and assistant coaches Ashley Poole, Hillary Nixon, and David Bro, Brown is to be recognized and honored for their outstanding twenty-twenty-two coach pitch softball season. And whereas by their dedication and commitment, this dynamic team consists of players Carson Smith, Jaylee Nixon, Paisley Lanning, Kinsley Linton, Nellie Leonard, Lilly Poole, Callie Barrier, Carson Carricker, Peyton Brown, Emerson Raper, Annalyn Clutz, Rebecca Lombard, Renee King, and Sabrina Jackson, won the North Carolina District Two Tournament on June twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two, and progressed to win the North Carolina State Tournament, played at Salisbury Community Park on July sixteen, twenty-twenty-two. And whereas the excellent performance and enthusiasm of these Rowan County young ladies, along with their coaching staff, have proven to be a source of admiration and inspiration to other youth, now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby honor the Rowan Little League eight and under All-Stars and coaching staff for their achievements as they represented Rowan County. This, the fifteenth day of August, twenty-twenty-two.
Nate, I'll call your names out one at a time if you'd come forward, and, and these are pretty valuable. If you'll take these to Dairy Queen after this tonight, and your parents add three dollars to it, you'll, you'll get a, an ice cream cone. Okay? But you can't cash it in for cash. All right, here we go. First, Carson Smith. All right, then Jaylee Nixon, catcher. Paisley Lanning. Kinsley Linton. Nellie Leonard. Lilly Poole. And is, is Lilly a coach's kid? There we go. Callie Barrier. Carson Carricker. Peyton Brown. Are you a coach's kid too? No, you are. Okay. Oh, good. Congratulations. Emerson Raper. Annalyn Clutz. Rebecca Lombard. King. And Sabrina Jackson. So this is your eight U North Carolina State Champions from Rowan County. Now, one, one note I have here says that Hillary Hampton was a former West Rowan athlete who played fast pitch and softball, was on the school's two-time state championship team. Yeah, how about that? That's right.
She's, she's our hero.
Oh, really good. So let, let me pass the mic to the coaches and let them say something about the team, okay?
Let's see, all fourteen of these are my kids. So I do not have a child on the team, but these are all my kids, and I couldn't be any happier to have all of them. This is great what you're doing. I mean, sometimes this age group gets overlooked, and I really appreciate it. These kids work hard. I mean, if I practice at two-thirty on Sunday morning in gravel, they'll be there, because they want to be Rowan Little League champions like everybody else before them. And it's, I want to, I appreciate all my parents, my coaches. This is awesome. I'm missing a birthday party for this, but I'm very happy, okay? All right, thank you. Mr. Bernhardt, how many years have you been associated with the Little League? Twenty-two this year. Ms. Poole is also a teacher, and she's giving up her summer for the kids. Ms. Nixon, as you already have heard, is world champion.
And Mr. Brown, I'm sorry, I don't know where, well, how you're employed. Because somebody in your family's putting a lot of money into this. I know.
Thank you for all that you do.
All. All right, so we're really excited that you guys are here. And the one thing we want to say as commissioners is, we appreciate the way you represent Rowan County when you're out playing. You're good sportsmen, we've been told, and you're champions on top of that. And you're good, you're, you're good in the classroom, right? You're getting good grades, and you're good at home, and you brush your teeth, and make your bed, and do all your chores, right? Okay, so we're really, really proud of you guys, and we're going to be watching you in the future, and we expect to see that you'll be doing some great things. So if y'all fan out across here, and then we're going to, this will be the first time I don't have to get on a chair to be seen in the back. So y'all, come on around, come on around. And you might, yeah, you, maybe we could, I don't know if we want to get a kneeling group in front. Yeah, a few of you on your knees in front. If, if a parent could maybe help us set some, our coaches, yeah, that'd be fine. You know what you want to do? Notice I didn't say, can we have some dads help? Yeah, yeah, yeah. They ain't going to help, she says.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for all the time.
Hey, now, the rule is, if you come for an award, you have to stay for all the boring stuff.
Mr. Chairman, I have a second then.
No. All right, so we, we did that recognition as a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Greg. We've got a few for public comment. First, Michael Chapman.
This is a very hard act to... My name is Michael Chapman. I bet most of you here and there and everywhere, I am getting around. I'm here to talk about the school system. So no, it's a favorite topic of everybody's. Since I've been seeking to be on one of these board members, I've learned a lot. Some not so good. Mostly, a lot not so good. But the kids that are involved are the ones that we've got to truly care about, and we've got to do some things to change here. What I'm here to do, first of all, is urge you as board members, and I know you guys are all concerned about the state of our school system. It's very bad. Our test scores are just so low, it's not funny. Well, only thirty-four percent of our children can, are proficient at reading. That's a problem. And when only twenty-four percent of them are proficient at math, that's a great problem also. Yet, we're pushing them out at eighty-five and a half percent. That is a big urgency. What I'm urging you to do, because, you know, is hold the system a little more accountable, and I know you do to a certain point, more if you could, to what they spend on taxpayers' money. The board needs to be more transparent with what they're doing with their money, what they're using it for, and they need to be fiscal responsible on how they spend it. And they spent over a hundred thousand dollars in the last year to do two things. One was to hire a consultant out of California, out of California, to put together this two thousand twenty-seven new plan. Was there no one here locally they could have paid? Are, are our folks within the school system not smart enough to do that? I think they are. But we had to go to California to get them, and that's three times the cost. Why did we spend eighteen thousand dollars as a school system to tell us that our classified employees aren't getting paid enough? In three hours, I Googled, get it, Googled it online, called several of the districts around our state to find out the same information. I wasn't paid, but I gave that information to them before they had this consultant's report. Why are we purchasing a barbecue house? There's no transparency there. I still don't know that. And we're paying a hundred and ten thousand dollars more than the market value. And no one has really given me a good reason why we're using it. The taxpayers' money is just being spent here and there. Why are we contracting for windows at a very extraordinary price? They do need to be done, but did you know they're spreading it out almost a year? And any contractor knows that every time they break down, the crew will bring them back again. That costs more money. Why couldn't they have done this in the summertime? Better planning. It needs to be accountable. You guys are handling the taxpayers' money that goes to the school board in most cases. Why are they taking this Esser Fund money, which y'all don't, y'all don't handle, but why are we spending it on things that, this don't seem very relative? Why aren't we spending it on the basics of math and, and, and reading and things to that report? You know, I've, I've looked, and I've had people tell me that the board has no power. Someone told me that on the board. And I asked them, who gave away that power? Because it seems like what's happening is, people within the central office seem to have that power that the board is supposed to be in charge of. That's a problem. Now, one perfect example is this morning, and I'll make this my last comment. Back in June, they approved the new discipline policy, and that was to strengthen it, to make it better, and to take certain words out like, student conduct may result, discipline and consequences may, may, and they changed it to will. But as of this morning online, it still may, even though the board voted on it. And when I called and talked to a board member this morning, he said, I didn't realize it. I'll talk to the other board members. Thank you very much for having me here this morning, or this afternoon, and I'm going to keep my eyes open. Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
Ronnie Smith. Good evening, commissioners. Everybody's got a smile on their face. Lord, I feel good. My name is Ronnie Smith. I'm a lifelong resident of Salisbury and Rowan County. I know most of you very well. I have missed you. I haven't been to one of these meetings for probably the last two years, and that may be good because we...
Two years, four weeks, six days, and eight hours.
Okay. And they're all my friends.
We're kidding.
And, okay, don't let that count on my three minutes. But, and maybe, and I'm serious, maybe that's because you all have done a wonderful job during the last couple of years. I sincerely appreciate that, and appreciate your service to our county. Ladies and gentlemen, in the audience may not know this, but if it was not for the Rowan County Commissioners, in my opinion, we may not have the beautiful Rowan County Vietnam Veterans Memorial today at the Salisbury City Park. May God bless you for making that happen. I'll be very, very brief. I'm here tonight, and I've got a few remarks. I don't want to be misquoted, to make two real special announcements. Number one, as you may be aware, Spencer, this past week, the town of Spencer unanimously approved plans to move forward immediately with the construction of our Rowan County Yakkin River Park. Tentative plans are to raise the funds necessary and break ground as early as September on this truly magnificent project. We're here this evening to ask for your support in helping us to make this project a success. The Yakkin River Park will be the gateway to Rowan County and has the potential to be one of the finest regional parks in the entire state of North Carolina. I'm providing each commissioner tonight with a brief summary about the park, which includes, believe it or not, two American flags. And I hope and pray we will have your support. Secondly, again, very briefly, I'm also here tonight as a United States Air Force veteran. I'm a combat veteran from Vietnam, and I want to ask your support in compliance, in full compliance with North Carolina statute one forty-four dash seven, which authorizes the American flag to be placed in our brand-new, city-owned Bell Tower Green Park directly across the street. On behalf of Rowan County's more than ten thousand veterans, we will greatly appreciate any support you can give us on this effort. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, ladies and gentlemen of Salisbury and Rowan County, may God bless you, may God bless our flag, and may God always bless America. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Barry Thomas. Hey, welcome.
Hey, Chairman Neads. My name is Barry Thomas, two oh five Frontier Circle, China Grove, North Carolina, Timberfield Development, to be exact. We're here to, to do a couple of things. I want to ask for some help, but in addition to that, Chairman Neads did come down, pay us a visit upon my request, and we appreciate that. And Chairman, I don't think this, I don't know if this drawing was available at the time when you came down, but that's that land we looked at back there. This kind of puts it better, in better perspective as far as the size of the buildings and how close proximity to our development this would be. All combined, these three buildings are bigger than the Macy's project. This is huge, really huge. And this, I don't think was available at all. This one really flies out of this, back this off the town of China Grove website. This is a, a drawing of another project that would border part of our residence properties in between Altech and Timberfield. I noticed was sent out to two, maybe three of the residents of the fifty-five who live in there about this. It was sent out August the thirtieth, and the town meeting was July the ninth. So I mean, it was like bam, bam, bam. I mean, we just barely had time to, to canvass the neighborhood and try to get a little support and go over and attend the town meeting. They heard us. We had a petition and seventy-eight signatures about a list of concerns, not, not anti-progress, but a list of concerns that we have as abutting property owners and being in account. So they, I was in hopes that they would table it, and there was a lot of conversation back and forth about buffers and setbacks and this proposed road to go in there to be widened sixty feet, which, base from the back of one of our neighbor's house, it's a hundred and forty-five feet to the edge of the project, where the auction yard would be. That, that one was for J.J. Kane wants to have an auction yard there. This is really close proximity. It, it is online auction, so it won't be the daily chant, you know, of an auctioneer, but it's going to be a lot of equipment and vehicles, movement in and out, and tractor-trailer work and so forth. So along with that, we, I'll read a little statement here prepared. Southern Rowan County residents outside the town of China Grove need your help. The town of China Grove is attempting to annex land outside of their ETJ, just like the county commissioners helped residents recently with the city of Salisbury. We are asking you to step in and help stop the town of China Grove from annexing land that is outside of their ETJ. from annexing land that is outside of their ETJ, not included in their land use plan. They have a copy of what two developers are proposing. I just showed. Do if annexed into the town, if they get annexed this property and it gets rezoned. It will require rezoning from Rowan County Rural Residential to China Grove Industrial. There are approximately a hundred and fifty single-family homes. This is addition to Timberfield, which is about three hundred and seventy-five residents that are circling the property. And this is an encroachment of industrial use into our residential areas on the north, east, and south sides of the proposed annexations that are roughly bounded by the one fifty-two East Corridor and across from Jessica Carson, uh, High School to the Mount Hope Church Road. So this, these are very large projects, and we're highly concerned and would like to the county and the Town of China Grove, uh, if they represent us, the the two entities get together with some public input. We've got areas in our community who are more than welcome, uh, any of you down at any time to meet with the community and and hear any additional concerns. But, uh, kind of rushed and, uh, did the best I could with it.
That's right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you. And I love you, and any of you have a standing invitation. I gave my name and address. Contact me, come down anytime. I'd be glad to show you around and 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 get a, play your eyes on just how much it how impact this would be.
Uh, Kay Eugene Obercash. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Kay Obercash. I live at one oh nine Frontier Circle. I believe that I'm the resident that Barry speaks about when he says a hundred and forty-five feet away from the project. Uh, it'd be right out my back door. And, uh, uh, it it does present a concern, not only for me, but for all the residents of Timberfield. Basically, what I have is an addendum to Barry's conversation. I have a son who is, uh, twenty-two years in neighborhood development for the city of Charleston. Uh, and he tells me that indeed, uh, this project or these projects will affect, uh, values of homes in that area by as much as a hundred thousand dollars. So, uh, I'd like to make these comments. The actions of the Town of China Grove will decrease our property values and our rural residential, single-family zoning. Our area cannot handle any more traffic. Uh, these projects, Macy's, uh, J.J. Kane, uh, the the three huge, uh, warehouse buildings at the end of Rock Road, uh, which at the present time is a dirt road, will, um, will impact, uh, traffic tremendously. Uh, I'm concerned about water retention and water drainage. Uh, I'm not sure China Grove has thought long and hard about that problem in these, uh, in these developments. The developer proposes, uh, includes two million square feet of more familiar fulfillment center space. It'll increase, uh, we believe, the dangers of diesel, uh, the exhaust with cancer and with children's asthmas. Uh, the decision will impact three hundred and seventy-five residents in the immediately adjacent area and over seven thousand, if you look beyond a quarter of a mile. We're at max of what our area can handle with industrial impacts and increased traffic. The people that live in the area will not benefit from the negative impacts that will come with this development. Uh, because of our low unemployment, Rowan County residents will not be the people filling these low-wage jobs, uh, in the fulfillment centers. This is not what the majority of our constituents want in southern Rowan County. We want to stay out of the town, and we want to keep the Rowan County Rural Residential zoning that has protected the surrounding neighborhoods for many years. Uh, if you'll permit me a a few more seconds. I I do want to, uh, uh, just, uh, speak for myself in saying that I I do, as you do, want to see Rowan County develop. And and I know, uh, that we, uh, we will benefit from that as citizens, uh, as individuals. And, uh, but I want to urge the council to, uh, think in terms of, uh, wisely planning for how residential and and, uh, industry interface. Uh, I know that the the eighty-five corridor is a place where where these kinds of developments seek to to locate. And, uh, uh, I would urge you to consider people, individuals, residents, and try as best you can to make the, uh, interface between industry and residential. Uh, the the buffering would be would be such that it would be an enhancement to, uh, the county rather than, uh, a detriment to to, uh, individual residents. Thank you.
Did they approve the auction, um, rezoning?
Uh, they they, you know, uh, I get tangled up in words here. They they said that they were going to recommend it, but recommending was not an approval. I don't know how such a distinction is made. They recommended the J.J. Kane auction, uh, be be moved to the town council. And, uh, to me, that is-
That was a planning board meeting then.
Sir.
So that was a planning board meeting.
That was a planning board meeting, right.
Okay, now we understand.
Town Council meets, uh, September sixth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we got for public comment. All right, um, item four, public hearing for Z O six dash two-two. Here for that. Oh, Shane, welcome.
Evening. All right, so this request here is from the Bogle Firm on behalf of the property owner. Their client, David Tucker, for his land at forty-seven twenty-five Long Ferry Road. Take a look at the map here. You'll see the property outlined in blue. It's on the south side of Long Ferry Road between Bay Ridge and Middle Oak Neighborhoods, just, um, east of Goodman Lake. So here's the aerial photography from about a year and a half ago. It showed the existing building. Per the assessor records in eighty-five, this building was a convenience store, which that predated zoning by several years. And from the tax office information in oh-one, it was converted to an office. In eleven, the property that was zoned RA at the time was converted to CBI CD for a funeral home. That never did materialize by the owner. And five years later, the current owner, David Tucker, purchased the property contingent upon that zoning designation, uh, being modified to pick up the grading and hauling business and, uh, heavy equipment, dump trucks, grading, et cetera, with five trucks total. That's the amendment that the commission adopted in sixteen. So, Mr. Tucker has submitted an application. Anytime we have a CD, as you know, we have to come back sometimes and whittle away at a site plan or any modifications that are not envisioned at that time. So, probably a little bit difficult to see on the screen here, but it would show up better on one of your attachments. But with Long Ferry Road at the bottom of the screen here, here's the existing building, and the owners want to tack on a twenty-two hundred and forty square feet on the back of the building. And it would be also a conversion on that grading business. They're gonna move all the equipment, any storage and materials off-site. And this will strictly be an office function for the employees and doing estimates and different things, more of a business function for their operation here, too. And that language is included in the site notes in that, uh, description there. In terms of other improvements, they do have some additional operational footprint and parking for the employees. One major note, the screening either was not installed or died back in sixteen. That's very evident when you look on the the photo here. They were using that twenty-foot buffer. So they're aware of that, and per the site plan, they have to keep that area free and clear of the twenty feet and install some landscaping, both along the rear, adjacent to Shea Charley Manufactured Home Park and the one residence here supplement anywhere there's a gap within the existing buffer. Here's a few pictures around the area. On the top left, you see Long Ferry Road here to the right. This is the upper drive to the facility. And on the lower image is Lower Drive headed east or looking east on Long Ferry. On the lower left with Long Ferry to your back, looking into the main drive on the lower end, you see some of the storage areas. A lot of this stuff has been removed, but, um, there's still some still there now. And just to the right, you see the existing structure here. On the top left at that building corner, the addition would be flush with the side of the building and then kick back over to the north. And the Manufactured Home Park's just beyond these trees here. On this image is the opposite corner. It'd be inset just a bit and extend to the rear. And outside that twenty-foot buffer, it's the closest home you see right here at the, uh, rear property line. On the north side, they have, uh, some, uh, fuel storage tanks, employee parking, and adjacent to that is an auto repair or some type of repair facility, and then mini-storage in the background. Both of those are CBI CD as well. Here's a pictometry oblique. There's the tour we had with the driveway, the rear of the property, where the building would be extended, and then those two adjacent, uh, businesses. These two predated zoning. This was zoned, I believe, in two thousand and five, uh, CBI CD. And that designation, uh, of CBI CDs in red here with dots, there's also one other commercial zoning in the general vicinity, which Dr. Webb developed a mini-storage years ago and expanded a few years back with a new owner. All other surrounding zoning is residential. But again, we're not changing designation. We're focused on the site plan. One piece of information from the land use plan that you could consider, and the planning board did too, where any proposals for expansion of an existing business just minimize conflict where possible through those technicians there encouraged, typically screening, or in this case here, you've got a totally different use where it's now office and owners volunteered to self-restrict, removing all those larger vehicles off-site, storage wouldn't be there, et cetera. For any of these applications, we send notice to adjoining property owners with the hundred, within a hundred feet that here's the subject property. So that'd be anything within blue. And that only represented five letters. A lot of this is owned by the same person. Posted a sign on the property and ads in the Salisbury Post. Didn't receive any calls. No one showed up at the planning board meeting either. As our typical approach, the planning board recommended unanimous five-oh to approve. They adopted a statement of consistency slash reasonableness for the board's consideration. And you would need a second motion to approve, deny, or, um, approve with conditions. And there's one, I think it's obvious from the site plan, but just to reiterate, as a condition of approval, should the board decide to do that, this one per site plan, all heavy equipment, construction material will be parked or stored off-site. And here's your statement for consideration here. It's also in the staff report. Any questions at the board?
Take us back to, did did you have a picture from the street looking at the business? Preview? But did y'all talk about any buffer?
Well, not in addition to the requirement. This all is proposed to remain. I haven't seen anything that would remove, um, any vegetation, but it it is a twenty-foot section that would have to be evergreen along this line and the rear.
Hey Shane, what's, uh, forty-six ninety-five? Is that a different business?
Yes, sir.
I don't know what that is.
I think it's some type of auto repair.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for Shane? All right, uh, does the applicant have anything you'd like to say? Okay. All right, um, then we'll open the floor. We'll have a public hearing if anyone would like to speak about this change. Uh, this will be a good time to do that. Right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And, uh, Commissioners, we have, um, uh, assuming this is something we pass, I'll offer up a a statement of reasonableness and consistency unless someone else has it pulled up. Uh, Z O six dash two-two is consistent with the East Area Land Use Plan and is reasonable and appropriate based on the following compatible with surrounding area. The conversion from an office with onsite storage of heavy equipment for hauling and grading to just a larger office space will be a benefit to the neighbors because the removal of the heavy equipment and debris to clean up the site. It is an expansion of a current business is better all over overall utilization of the property. I make that in form of a motion. We have a second, second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we have a motion to approve, uh, the, well, with, uh, with the, um, recommendation or with the agreement, yeah, condition, thank you, of per site plan, all heavy equipment and construction material will be will be parked and stored off-site.
I make that in form of a motion.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Shane, thank you. Aaron? Uh, P E O four dash two-two.
All right, so this request is a permit to exceed the noise ordinance from, uh, Mikey Wetzel. The board may recall back in nineteen, Mr. Wetzel applied for that permit to exceed. Bit unique, you've got the, what I guess is commonly referred to as Goat Island out there in High Rock Lake. And they had an event back in nineteen where it was a a floating pontoon boat with the set stage set up. This will be the same request during COVID. They didn't have those events. But from a map standpoint, for benefit of everybody, here's the island. And the location would be just west of the island there where a stage would be set up here. So you see the Goodman Lake Road and Bridge here. And with that request, it's specifically for Sunday, August twenty-first, this coming Sunday, two to five. They have a rain delay in case that actually, or a rain date should, it ran them out on that date for the twenty-eighth. And from, let's see. Just like with the previous event, we tried to reach out to a large number of folks. It can kind of get out of hand, but we sent out a hundred and thirteen letters. Everybody here that you see around the shoreline, the island's about right here. So previously, I don't recall that there was any, uh, concern that we, I would- Okay, but we did reach out this time from, uh, various departments, Sheriff's Department, telecommunications, um, NC Wildlife Staff, and, uh, Cube Hydro or Eagle Creek now. NC Wildlife Staff and Cube Hydro or Eagle Creek now. No negative feedback from those agencies. Eagle Creek did not respond to our email from probably three weeks ago. And in terms of, with most of these requests, we do ask for nine-one-one call logs just to see what type of feedback may have been provided by the general public. And we, there was one noise complaint during the time of nineteen, but it was at twelve eleven, which was a little bit before the event. But in speaking with Mr. Wetzel, his operation commenced after that time, closer to two P M, I believe. So when you're looking at nine-one-one logs, it's hard to pinpoint exactly where the source would be from a call. So in fairness to him, it didn't sound like it was his event of somebody else. So with that said, we have a typical process, we go through a ten-point list in the ordinance. I won't cover all that. For the most part, this is captured during the memo here in my comments now. But let's see. I don't think there was anything else to cover. So with any other application, we send the letters out. There's nowhere to post a sign because it was on the water. And in terms of the timing, folks had ten, twelve days to respond. So any questions of the board?
Shane, I just have one. I've participated in Creek Week and picked up garbage along the shore that comes from Goat Island. And I was wondering if there was any discussion about participants gathering garbage during and after the concert.
I have not, no.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Shane? All right, don't go far. All right, we'll open the floor. And if we have anyone that would like to speak or against this, and actually, let me see here. So we'll have the applicant with, Mikey, would you like to speak?
I think most of you were around in two thousand and nineteen. But to kind of replenish in your thoughts, what this is, it's just a, it's just a fun day out on the lake. It's a noise permit, but it's kind of weird because it's right smack in the middle of the lake. So you know who's property is whatever. But it's obviously get permissions, get support from all the law enforcement and support people. We got NC Wildlife is on board with it. We got Rowan Search and Rescue is going to put a boat. And when I say they're on board with it, I got them on both dates in case we have to use the twenty-eighth. And we got the military fire department also has. It, I did manage to reach out to Eagle Creek and they are on board with it basically as long as NC Wildlife. They said because it doesn't touch the shore, they really don't have jurisdiction. But their main thing was if NC Wildlife is okay, then they're okay. The way it works is basically imagine a pontoon boat where it's stripped out and put a band on it. You float it out in the middle of the lake, you put some boats around with anchors. We use three boats, one on each side, and I'm leaving a stage in the front. Those boats have a fire extinguisher on them, for example, and life vest. There's a generator that goes, people ask, how do you get the electricity out there in a safe way? Like I said, there's the, our boats are out there in case there's anything. When I pitched this to you guys last time, at least one of you had a kind of concern was, well, let's go ahead and do it. But if there's any problems, then might be questionable in future. Well, fortunately, the event went great. Some of you were actually there and could testify that it was a good event. It's generally a family-friendly event. We used a country band last time, we're using a country band again this time. The reason we do Sunday from two to five is because we're trying to be respectful. It's certainly not a nighttime request. You know, I don't know how many noise permits you get for the middle of the day. I don't, I don't know, but just Sunday from two to five. Why Goat Island? Because there's already a bunch of people there. I mean, I go on any Saturday or Sunday, that's kind of the hangout spot. If you kind of notice on the map, there's not a lot of properties around there. Unfortunately, Jimmy's house is nearby and he's impacted. The boats are there and as Jimmy will probably say, there's loud music out there quite often. And the way I look at it is I'm just asking to be the one who gets to control the song that's playing. If we're not there, then there's going to be people out there probably blaring the radios. And then you had a concern about the garbage. I'm out in that area a lot and unfortunately, there is trash like on the island. You get people who they throw. Me and my friends, we love that place. I got, I got friends here supporting me and we go out there and we've organized trash pickups. And it's very simple, we got a lot of people, you say, everybody just pick up one trash bag. It's actually, you get seventeen people, let's say, to do that, that's a lot of trash taken off. A lot of the trash that is in the area is not really coming from Goat Island. If you look at the map, you can tell that lake, there are coves everywhere and unfortunately, little streams do. If you have a big rain, that's when you see. But there's also a big cleanup every September that a lot of us are involved in. And Facebook group that I'm on will definitely be promoting the cleanup. So that's just something irrespective of this event, we're going to, we're going to do our part, the ones who love the lake. We want to keep the lake fine and we want to keep it clean and safe.
Questions for Mikey?
Fair question. So I guess, I guess you go out there regularly earlier on Sundays. Did you see a lot more folks show up that one day than you would normally be out there?
I anticipate a better turnout this time because there's just more people on Facebook than there was before. But we had, I want to say, so one thing was weird, we started at two o'clock. And at two o'clock, I was like, oh my gosh, this event's not very, very populated. Like I felt like I failed. But then by the end of it, by five o'clock, there was, you know, probably about two hundred boats out there. I would, are two, I don't know, it's hard to say, but actually have drone footage. And I took it in the beginning and there's not that many people there. But it turned out to be a pretty crowded, certainly the Wildlife Search and Rescue in North Ferry. They were comfortable with the event this time, enough to agree to do it this time.
Okay, so I guess kind of my question, you didn't think there was too many votes that got out there because of the event last time?
But I mean, me personally, I'd like to see a fun event. There is events at other lakes, Lake Norman has a lake that's quite popularly attended. I've never been over there, but I've seen pictures on Facebook. But there's always concern like, is it the type of event where everybody's getting drunk? And there's that kind of component. And you know, that's again, that's Sunday, two to five kind of helps that a little bit. I mean, I understand your concern.
Else for Mikey? All right, thank you. Anyone else, Jimmy?
I'm Jim Shepherd. I own most of the land that's around the island. And from the last time, we had excessive garbage all over my land. There were piles of human excrement where they used the bathroom on my land, left toilet paper. There were so many boats out there, other boats could not get through. There was no insurance policy. They claimed it was going to charity and it didn't go to charity, it went to the band, two thousand dollars. That's what he claimed in his letter for this. So you can look up his letter he put out. This whole thing is a disaster for me. I own all the land around there and my mom owns the other half. And if he wants it, can he have it at his bar on the lake? I mean, this is ridiculous. I don't want this in my front yard and he puts it in my front yard facing towards me. So I have to listen to the music. I cannot get away from it. And on a Sunday afternoon, too, no matter what day it is, I don't want it in my front yard. And this whole thing is idiotic. It should not be done. This is and there's so many other things. Is there any insurance on this at all? If someone comes over there messing with me and something happens on my land or something, hurt, someone gets hurt, do I get sued? No, I'm going after Mikey. If there's not an insurance company, so I need to know who has the insurance. It's a festival, it's an event, it should have insurance. Is there any insurance? Do you have any insurance for the event? You're supposed to have, if I haven't been anywhere, I have to have insurance. If I have a wedding venue, I have to have insurance. If I go to a wedding venue, I have to have private insurance. Everything has to have insurance. So this is in my front yard, like I said, this is ridiculous. Thank you.
Thanks, Jimmy. Anyone else?
Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I remember Greg, Jim showed me where you're putting your new house. How would you like to have it in your front yard?
Okay.
Think about it. It's better there at your place because you've got better traffic flow. It's really congested around Goat Island. But and obviously, I wanted to say that I am speaking in opposition to this happening. We've had even greater concern this year than the time previously. There are no sheriff deputies or wildlife officers in that vicinity. We're sitting out there on the deck, we watch, we see. There may be other places on the lake. And also, when we go for boat rides, we see the rest of the lake is pretty well deserted. We got them all, even the ones that put in at Tamarack and the access area near it. They come to Goat Island. And what goes on at Goat Island? The language that is used is horrific. Drugs are done, they're drunk. And if you will note, one of the things that if anybody says anything about, about High Rock, we seem to be known for the people that have drowned on the lake and we're known for the boat accidents. And I haven't checked it recently, but every boat accident that had happened previously on the lake, alcohol was involved. The driver was considered drunk that was involved in these accidents. But it is a great concern that the deputies and the wildlife officers have not been there on a regular basis. And if you note, on August the sixth, there was a bad crash, boat crash on High Rock involving a bass boat that ran into a pontoon. And there were no officers of any kind present to help. And civilians rushed over to come to the rescue of the injured three on the pontoon boat that was hit by the bass boat were injured. And that is a concern. Mr. Wetzel is that that they will have people present, officers to make sure. And I want to be very sure that you will have folks there who protect me, my family, my land. We get the overflow. They aren't just anchored there. There's no bathroom facilities. So they come to our land, my sons and mine and my daughters to use that for their bathroom. All of our land has no trespassing signs and it doesn't seem to deter the trespasses in any way, shape or form. Because there's no law enforcement around there to do anything to stop them. And we do have some of the loud music, it was pretty bad this weekend. It hadn't been that bad the rest of the year, but Jim is right over there and gets the full brunt of it. And you'd like to have a little peace after you've gone to church Sunday, when you come home to be able to sit on your deck and look at the lake and watch the birds and see other people enjoying the lake. And it's not very peaceful down there with, with the noise. And this is just adding more noise to it. But, and High Rock is also known as the party place. So you've got, you've got your people that come and their idea of a party is to drink and drink heavily. And hopefully, they get a designated driver. But you just see so many cases when people's lives are put in jeopardy. And even when we did have officers, they were gone off the lake at five. And there's more happening probably after that. And a lot of them are going up to Mikey's restaurant. Lake Sage, is that the name? Waters Edge, I'm sorry. Have a name, you stick with the old name. I still call this the post office. I was born in Salisbury, raised here in nineteen forty-three, I'm seventy-nine. So it's a joy to come into this building and see that you have preserved the, the beauty. It just, it just feels good, it feels like historic Salisbury. And I'm one of those historic Salisburyans. I've probably got more age than any of the rest of you in here. But please consider. And we'd also like it very much if the, you know, beside having an officer then, if you could get some of the deputies on the lake after dark. We have jet skis and they're not supposed to be riding after sunset. And they ride with no lights, there's boats with no lights. They don't know, the pontoons don't know the rules. They run docking lights, which are not headlights to be run. There's just, there's nothing that is. And on like the jet skis, it's a two-passenger jet ski. And if you're pulling someone behind you on a floating device, that's added on. And frequently, there'll be, you know, three or four behind. And that's in violation. There's just so many things that are not being observed that we just really like to have more of a police presence on the lake. And this, this is going to just create such an overflow if Mikey gets the the amount of people he wants to come.
All right.
Oh, sure. My name is Janet Marsh Shepherd. And my address is nine-nine-five Ned Marsh Road, Salisbury, N C, two-eight-one-four-six. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer. And I'd love to have any of you come visit me and observe.
Well, you brought up, you brought up some great points.
Well, thank you, Greg.
We appreciate your time here. Thank you. And, and you've done better than this room has even. You've aged better than the room has.
You, you, you've always know the right things to say.
It's good, it's good to see you again.
You're, you're a real politician, Greg.
Thank you. The insurance job pays the bills.
You were my agent at one point.
I know, it's, it's good.
You were just never available, so I had to find some.
I know, because I'm right here all the time. All right, good to see you. Yeah. All right, anyone else? Yeah, come on.
Board members, my name's Terry Bergeron, I live in three-seven-one Reynolds Road, I'll see you at High Rock Lake. Two years ago, I moved from Cornelius, Lake Norman, to High Rock Lake. And the only reason I left Cornelius was because High Rock Lake is a family lake. It night and day difference from Lake Norman. I've got a family and I take my family to Goat Island, usually two to three times a month, usually on Sunday as well. And it's a very family-orienteded location, just like any place that's open to the just like any place that's open to the public, just like a park. You have other people that show up and they bring their own agendas. That's out of Mikey's control or other people's control that are on the lake. And I understand and hear you two's burns, and they're absolutely right. There are people that do show up. To be honest, they usually get corrected. Someone sorts them out because again, it's a family lake. For me, the lake is open for everybody. I had a band on July fourth on the lake at my house. And I had it facing the water. I probably had about a hundred boats outside my back door. I caught my front door facing the lake. And they had an extremely amazing time. Um, people from all over the lake came over, had a wonderful time. We didn't have any boating accidents. We didn't have any alcohol related instances. We didn't have anybody get hurt. Everybody pulled up on their boats. They listened to the music. They tended respectfully and everyone left. I did it in the evening times. I did mine from five o'clock to nine PM. Mikey's trying to do it from two o'clock to five o'clock in the afternoon on a Sunday. Um, to me, it's a, a family outing. And I understand everyone's concern that it's going to be loud, it's going to be obnoxious. It's three hours. And I get it's going to have aftermath of people wanting to stay and, and party and enjoy themselves on a lake. But it's done every single Sunday. If you go out on that lake on Sunday, any given time, there'll be ten boats out there, could be seventy-five boats out there. Um, it is a location where everyone likes to go and congregate. Um, and so I feel a lot of that blame is from the constant, um, weekend parties. Um, to bring everybody together for one incident, one evening or afternoon to enjoy themselves. Um, again, it's a family lake. I feel like we all should be able to have a, a great time and having the supervision of law enforcement, fire and rescue that's there. I feel like this would be a very beneficial thing for the lake and not something that's negative. I appreciate all your time. You'll have a good afternoon. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, we'll close, uh, floor for public hearing and commissioners, any comments?
It sounds like these folks are having a hard time generally with Goat Island. So I think the actually having something there where wildlife's going to be there and um, the other agency is actually probably going to at least for those three hours be better than normal for them, even though there may be more boats. Um, wish there was something that could be done for the normal issues they have and especially, I think, you know, Judy talking about going out picking up trash and things. Um, but actually, I guess, you know, like I said, if you're going to have if they're going to have it, I'd rather it be during the day than it, I guess they would rather than it be at night. And so I guess that's the odd thing is having them out there. No one is there because I know when I'm on patrol and we have events in the area, we actually kind of concentrate on that area more, knowing that it's there and knowing that more people is going to be there. So actually, I think they probably will have more, more protection during those three hours than they normally would because it sounds like normal a Sunday afternoon to Goat Island could be much more, uh, much more of a handful for them.
With, uh, with a lot of other permits that we issue for this stuff, we require law enforcement to be there. And it's based, I know our, our rental agreement uh, at the West End Plaza, it depends on the number of people that are going to be there as to how many law enforcement folks we have there. Now, I understand this is a unique situation. And the sheriff is going to ask me, you know, probably for a new boat after I've mentioned this. But, um, but, um, anyway, it, it seems to me like if we could, we could work out a situation that, that we'd have some uh, enforcement there that, uh, it maybe would stop some of the complaints that these folks have with this.
Yeah, I Yeah, so, yeah, good point. We did close a public hearing. I'll be happy to talk to you afterwards about some of that. Yeah. So, um, sheriff said that he confirmed with wildlife, they'll have three boats out there. And then, uh, we'll, we'll have a side conversation with uh, the sheriff regarding, um, what their schedule is. Don's on the lake, so maybe he knows. Uh, I was out there uh, sometime last week and, uh, was going in and saw sheriff's boat pass. Um, I was out there yesterday and uh, my wife and I got in a pontoon boat and drove around Goat Island. Nothing was going on. That was at two o'clock. It's pretty quiet. Um, so we went, um, and just anchored up in a cove and jumped in the water with floats and enjoyed the afternoon. I did go to the event a couple of years ago. Uh, it was pretty slow to begin with, but um, it was pretty well attended, um, didn't feel unsafe at all. Um, my whole family, uh, kids and all jumped in the water on floats. And, uh, I actually paddled from boat to boat and said hello to friends. And I think that's kind of what folks want, you know? They want to be able to enjoy that. It's kind of a lake life. My son and daughter-in-law live down in Huntersville and they live in a neighborhood. It's not on a lake. Instead, they get in golf carts and they drive down the street and pull up in someone's yard and they talk from a golf cart. That's what they do. You know, when you're, uh, on the lake, you tend to kind of want to be together and um, uh, there's a group that we go out with every Tuesday night and we anchor up and have dinner on the lake. Everyone brings their own food and we have dinner every other Tuesday and that's a lot of fun. Um, so I'm with you. I st- I'm still trying to figure out front door, back door. Uh, it's, it's messing with me because, uh, I know what I used to call a front door and now I got to call something else front door. I've been to Lake Norman and seen thousands of boats, thousands of boats. And that's just kind of what they do. And I don't think anyone's wanting to do this. Yeah, regarding the insurance policies, um, we, we do deal with that quite a bit. Um, i- if, um, if someone wants to use the West End Plaza for an event, a wedding or a whatever it could be, they have to provide an insurance policy. Uh, if you go to a hotel and want to have a, a wedding event there, you have to, um, most of the time. Uh, colleges, we had to do it with my daughter, got married, top of college, you got to provide that. But, um, uh, Rowan County does not own High Rock Lake. And so we don't have the authority to require that anyone carrying insurance policy. And so, um, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't delve into that at all. And, and as property owners, I, I know this, um, we don't own the lake. We've been told that quite a bit by Alcoa and by Cube. Uh, we don't own, uh, the lake bed. Um, I, I guess the, uh, property owners own a little bit out in, into the water. Okay, so, but, but, okay, but we, okay, so okay, and again, I'll be happy to talk to you about that afterwards. We don't own Goat Island. If, um, I, I would imagine either Cube or, uh, Alcoa does. If Cube and Alcoa wants to stop this, they can, but, um, they, they've not done that at this point. And, um, and, and everyone, uh, like you said, I think everyone has a right to enjoy the lake. Um, if so three hours out of, if someone could calculate how many hours in a year it is, I just don't think it's it's unreasonable to have, um, some events like that. And, and frankly, and maybe this will come to pass, if Mikey, if you want to anchor off of my, out in front of my place and have it out there for three hours in a year, I mean, that, that would probably be okay. I mean, I just, I think it's for the greater good. I think folks just uh, want to enjoy it. And I think there is a sense that we need to be responsible. And if we do see something going on that shouldn't be, we need to tell folks, uh, across from us, folks camp and fish. And my wife and I have gone over there on the boat and seen garbage and we take big contractor bags with us and we pull up unasked. And we go over on land we don't own and we pick up garbage. We do that all the time. So, um, a- as a lake, um, occupant to be, I, I look forward, I'm sorry, I just do. I look forward to events like this. And I think it's great, uh, to have folks out. It's one of the assets that we have that not many communities have. And so I have, I have looked forward to events like this even before I became a commissioner, and I just don't think it's unreasonable. We were looking at having this every day or every weekend. It's one thing. But one weekend out of the, out of the year is not unreasonable. And, and I friendly about it on all sides is a good thing. Uh, no, no, I, no, no, no. Well, we're, we're going to hear, we're, we are, we're going to hear later on a, um, a report on the garbage that we're picking up around Rowan County. And we will learn that is not unique to High Rock Lake. Um, we have a cultural problem. Um, and I won't say that we're the only one that has it because it, it happens in other counties as well. But I can only tell you that when we find out that, uh, that we pick up in one month, nine and a half tons, not wet, nine and a half tons of roadside garbage. We have a cultural problem. Where folks just think it's perfectly okay to sit at a stop sign in rural Rowan County, open their door. And I've watched them do it and just dump all their garbage out on the ground. I, I think the folks on the lake are a little different than that. I think they have a different. Now, there might be some folks that aren't like that, 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 that are like that, that'll just dump stuff. But I think for the most part, folks are, are pretty, uh, judicious with that. And, and, um, and I'll volunteer if we vote to approve this event, and I know Mikey will as well, we'll get an army of folks that'll go around Goat Island and will be, you probably won't let us on your land. But we would, uh, gladly pick up garbage, uh, after the event. Um, but anyway, so that's.
Mr. Chairman, can I call for a question, please?
Yes, sir, we can do that. All right, uh, any other? Okay, uh, so, um, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, P E O four dash two two.
Second.
Any other discussion? Right on, favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, all opposed? Uh, happy to talk to you guys. Sheriff, I want to talk with you, um, about, um, policing on the lake. And Mikey, let's talk about some type of garbage pickup after the event. Is that okay? Yeah, all right. No, no, that's not a rule. You don't have to say. Basically, oh, let's see. Okay.
Oh, I got you.
Go ahead.
Philip, before you talk, I have, I have a couple of things to say. Okay? They're not really interesting, but, uh, so, um, A- ADW is here tonight for two completely different reasons. Um, the first reason is to, um, share with you the, the most recent, um, internal, uh, proposed renovations as well as the, which I think I, all the commissioners probably may have a copy, um, the estimated cost for the base bid of the project with all the alternates. And so that's the main, that's one reason they're here. After that discussion, um, if the board is interested in moving forward with, um, the agriculture center, then there would need to be two motions. One would be to authorize ADW, uh, to go out for bid. And the second would be to authorize the, uh, finance officer and manager administration or whatnot to begin the, um, financing process through the local government commission and get, get everything in order for that. So, um, those are two motions for the first reason they're here. The second reason, so after we, um, make it through the first reason, and if the board wants to consider that, then we'll go to the, the next one, which is to present the, is the programming that was completed for the future, possible future, um, health department at the West End Plaza. And to this point, ADW is pretty much done. They've done their job. They've either been paid or they're going to be paid and, and, and they are released and have nothing else to do with the health department. So if the board wants to move forward with the health department, um, being located there, then there would need to be a motion to negotiate with, to authorize the manager to negotiate with ADW for the construction design, um, uh, bid, actual construction, uh, project manager, et cetera, what, like, like we have, um, for the first reason they're here. Um, and then we would bring a contract back. But, and I'm sure as we get into it, we'll talk about money. But I can say for both items, nothing will be, well, nothing will be done in, in, in finality without the items coming back before you again and again and again and again. Because there'll be LGC approval, there'll be, when the bids come in, you'll be looking at the bids and there'll be, you know, potentially, you know, selection of what you want to do. So this is just the beginning of the beginning. It's not, there's no finality to, um, you know, if, if the, the board decides to do this and they approve, you know, A through Z, that doesn't mean A through Z is going to happen. This is just putting that in motion. So, uh, with that, Philip, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, commissioners, chair, thank you so much for having us here tonight. Um, like Aaron was mentioning, what we want to do on West End Plaza is we kind of want to just give you an update of where we're at today. So we're working on construction documents. And, uh, the last time uh, the last time we were here, we were showing you some of the interior mall space of the belk, the meeting hall area with the pre-impulse function spaces, also the inside. Uh, you all mentioned that you wanted us to look at possibility of doing an alternate, which would be alternate four, of doing, showing you the interior views of the mall. We want to do is just kind of show you that today of what we came up with. Um, just to get everybody oriented, uh, this would be the meeting hall area. Agricultural offices. And the peach here, this is the area, this is, uh, J C Penney's is over here. This is the area that we would propose an alternate for to renovate basically this whole area. Um, we were talking before, if we're going to spend all this money to do on the inside and the outside, again, these are alternates. Uh, it makes sense to kind of do part of the mall. So if you're walking in, it feels like it's been renovated. It's got a different life to it, especially walking into the agricultural center and agricultural meeting area. But we're going to show you some renderings on that. We have quite a few, excuse me. Uh, so this view is an existing shot as you're coming in from J C Penney's, the mall. And, uh, this is kind of the center of the mall. Uh, you can see it's, uh, not as bright.
That's inside Penny's looking into the mall.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm coming in from the main entrance of the Penny's is on the left. And, and then you're looking straight through, uh, to, if you go to the right would be the belk, the existing belk. I'll just go back one to show you where I'm talking about. So that view is if I'm standing here looking back towards the blue. Okay? Okay, so what we've done is the outside character that you all had before, you kind of had that natural, that cultural stone, that, that mid-century modern look, um, craftsman style look. Uh, we are proposing to do new floor. It's an LVT floor, proposing to do new light fixtures. We are proposing to do new floor, it's an L V T floor, proposing to do new light fixtures, new ceiling to give it a different look. You will see on the left-hand side, there's some images. Those images, we don't know what departments are going there yet, right? So what we want to do is just show something there so it doesn't look so bland. And so these are just, uh, graphics that we can get blown up and you'll kind of see that through our quick presentation here. All right, this is, this shot's a little bit farther down from the corridor as you come in, the restroom's on the right and your Veterans Affairs on the right as well. But this is the restrooms, we're also going to renovate, there's two little restrooms in there, that's also part of alternate four. Uh, you can start to see the, uh, introducing some new storefront, the blue here, some paint, again, the columns, the L V T. Uh, part of our project, we're not doing furniture, so don't start, don't look at the furniture design, uh, that'd be done by the county.
That Thelma's on the right there.
There's another shot kind of inside the mall here. And again, using the same materials, you can see some of the super graphics, we call that. Again, we don't know what's behind there. Uh, you've probably seen a lot of different malls that you go to that coming soon or something like that. So there might be even some, uh, identity we could do in the future. Apartments. And the, uh, this is kind of in the center of the mall. Um, agricultural centers over here, we start to look at, uh, these are the existing planners. When we talked to Amy Lynn with Cooperative Extension, she mentioned that her department would actually be, uh, using those existing planners. And she wants to highlight and showcase that. We started looking at interactive space, uh, people can sit on here, they can talk. And these are almost looks like gray contours, you have another. Sorry about that, uh, I think it's the only shot I have, but, but we wanted to be, be a little bit more interactive space than just a planner. And, uh, so we took a little bit of liberty and make it a little bit more sculptural, kind of in the center of the space. The shot is the, where the existing, um, agricultural, I'm sorry, where the agricultural meeting, I'm sorry, the agricultural office will go into. And, uh, you'll start to see some of the similarities on the outside of our building, kind of coming in the inside. So this will give the identity of the agricultural office area. Again, the new ceiling, light fixtures, and then this planner, we just kind of kept it as is, we didn't do anything. This is the entrance, uh, right now, the existing Belk area. And we would like to, um, create the new community hall area or meeting hall area, again, with that trial, trialless look. So taking some of the aesthetics from the outside of the building and kind of bringing them in a little bit. So they're very, very similar in texture and finishes and things. Keeping the skylights in place, I thought that was a good idea, uh, we got a lot of nat- natural light, especially if she's got different plantings and things like that into the, uh, planners and everything like that. Um, next, I want to talk about the project timeline. Like I said, we're trying to finish up the construction documents so we can go out to bid. Uh, this schedule's actually a little bit more aggressive and wanted to get your opinion on that. So this schedule shows that we will be done with our construction document phase around September thirteenth, okay? From that, we have two choices. Uh, one choice, if you wanted to as a board, that you could go out for bids, get bids from general contractors. And I'll talk about the different alternates, uh, we do have to get building permits. And we do have to go through the Department of Insurance for their review. But do that first to get the building permits approval, it's D O I approval, then we could bid the project. But if you want to accelerate the schedule, we could kind of do that simultaneously. This schedule shows you doing it simultaneously to be a little bit more aggressive on a schedule.
Phillip, sometimes the, um, the, the Department of Insurance may come up with changes. Would it be okay that we, if the board wants to move forward, that we slow that down and, and not, not go out to bid to after we know that the Department of Insurance is completely okay with it?
The Department of Insurance really looks at life safety and then disability. So there might be some exit requirements that we may have to look at, maybe some exit signs and things like that. Typically in our experience, they're not really extensive review comments. But, uh, we feel like if you did want to wait, that's fine, before you, before you put it out to bid, that's not a big deal. That's pretty much the standard procedure, but if you did want to ask a little bit, kind of get it out to bid, uh, you could do that simultaneously.
How much, how much would that delay if you?
So, so I think we haven't talked to the county, depending on their workload, but it might take for about four to five weeks to get comments back from them. And then a couple of weeks for us to incorporate their comments and give it back. D O I takes about five to six weeks. So we feel like we can submit simultaneously for the county permit as well as a D O I. And about five to six weeks, you'd get review comment. After that, then we could bid the project.
And, and, and one other thing is that, uh, the L G C would, would not, they won't entertain the financing until our audit's complete. So that's, even if the bids, we could go out for bid, um, in November, but it's, it's going to be before December or the first of January, uh, before the L G C would, would, uh, approve.
If you all wanted to bid after permits, you're looking probably early, uh, November and then get the contractor, you have to do the contracts, right? So that might take three to four weeks or something like that on the contract. And then, and then actually start the project. So, so there's some time yet to kind of look at everything, especially all the alternates. I'm going to go through that next because there's quite a bit of alternates, uh, to go over. We're thinking, I mean, if you, if you wanted to do this schedule and advertise it, say, uh, in early September or even, say, uh, November, you could get started, say, like in December. And then you would be done, uh, about, uh, probably February of twenty twenty-three. Again, this schedule doesn't reflect the schedule we were just talking about.
Yep, February twenty-three, or did you mean February twenty-four?
Twenty-four, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-four, you're correct.
Okay.
Sorry, twenty-twenty-three, but if you, if you bid it in November, you'd pitch it up to about January. How about the cost estimate?
For the?
Up on the screen here.
Oh, they need to? They need to load for you?
That was, um.
Oh, it's, uh, this is what was on the agenda. And you sent a reva, because you didn't have the estimates.
I'm providing, yep.
Um, so yeah, that's, it's still your fault, no. Let's see, is, is Aaron or April?
I have it on here.
Oh, do you? Okay, sure.
I'm going to plug it in or? Aaron back there? Thank you.
I think so, yeah. On here now.
That's it.
And then, thank you. All right, sorry about that. So. There we go, okay, here we go, um. Perfect, okay.
There we go.
All right, so we had our professional cost estimator, uh, review this the last couple of weeks. So this is hot, right off, hot the press, came back on Friday afternoon. As you know, construction costs are increasing monthly, it seems like. Heroes are hard to get. And, uh, so, uh, we feel like we have a really good cost estimate currently right now in today's market. So I'm going to quickly go over some of these estimates. The base bid, again, it's the agricultural office, the meeting hall area, site prep for demonstration gardens and storage buildings, around off the numbers, but, uh, right. Thousand dollars, that's just the bill. We've included seven alternates. First alternate is the exterior renovations, entries and canopies only at the Belk. About four million dollars for that. Alternate two, parking lots, site alterations around Belk and outdoor pavilion and classroom area. Point five. Alternate three, exterior renovations, parking lot, light alterations between Belk and J C Pennyville. Alternate four is, and it's that, uh, interior renovation, agricultural center, and that's it. Added alternate five, uh, we weren't sure if the commissioners would want this or not, but we put this in, you don't have to take it. Adding E V charging stations, infrastructure only, not the actual E V machine. All wanted to add in E V station. That was like a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for that. Relocation, thank you. Uh, alternate six, um, four portable stages, large meeting area. About fifty-five thousand dollars for that. Alternate seven is two different U S, U S D A departments, uh, N R C S and the F S A. Actually, that number is broken out, so the, um, filter for U S D A can understand. Renovations typically take, uh, about five percent of the construction cost for owner contingency. This project set aside for just anything. Building, it's a build, it's an older building, you might run in some unforeseen items like that, so. Typically put that for renovations, about five percent. Over one point five million for that. And if you don't use it, you get it back at the end of the construction. Total construction costs allocated right today is about thirty-two million. Have you add in the owner's soft costs? Minor fees, that's, uh, point seven, uh, to say, point eight million. Total cost for the entire project's at thirty mil, thirty-five million, six hundred. That went up a little bit when we did our design development estimate, design development, we were at thirty-two million, eight hundred. So that was done about five, six months ago. How construction's really escalating over the time, also you added that alternate four, just keep that in mind. Up a million dollars under that, under that construction.
And Phillip, if I may, for, for a second, if, if it's okay with the chairman, can I just briefly review for the public what our financial, uh, model is around this project? So currently we have approximately six million dollars that we've been saving over the last three or four years to go toward just renovation. Now, assuming that, that all the alternates are chosen, which, you know, may or may not be the case. But just if you make that assumption, um, and of course, like I said earlier, this is not, you know, if the board chooses to go out for bid and you want to bid all the alternates, that doesn't mean you have to do any of the alternates when the bids come in. And we truly don't know what the numbers is, I mean, it's a very educated guess from the estimators, but, um, let's just, let's say you, let's pretend that it comes in right at, uh, thirty-five point six million dollars. And everything is, is as is and the board decides to do every single alternate. In, in that event, you would have approximately twenty-nine million dollars left to complete the project. We, I estimate, um, and that the annual payment on a fifteen-year note for twenty-nine point six million would be about two point six million dollars, that's using a four percent, interest rate, the, uh, most recent interest rates, uh, that the L G C is seeing is three point two five to three five. So that may be a little, uh, more than it actually is. We have, so, so take that number, let's say it's two point six million would be the annual payment for the next, uh, fifteen years. We currently have budgeted in our debt service line and, and, and our debt service budget. And what our debt service budget means is basically, um, our departmental budget that's for our mortgages, what we owe and what the annual payment is. So this year, we budgeted eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, um, in our budget to go to pay for the debt on the construction, o- on this building. So we, we already have in our budget eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars a year. In addition to that, uh, we had a contingency, the final contingency that was approved by the board was about a hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred thousand. If the board wanted to take that money and use that money, well, we technically aren't probably even going to pay this debt this year. But it, it's getting our budget ready to absorb what the debt would be. Then you would take the eight hundred, well, it's almost nine hundred thousand, uh, plus the, uh, two hundred is about one point one million that we have already in our budget to to take on this debt, okay? So if you did do the full amount, uh, the remaining amount that's estimated that we would need to add to this upcoming budget, even though we likely would not even be paying the debt in the upcoming budget, because if the project is not completed until twenty-four, um, you know, we're, we're still looking out, you know, over a year and a half and our budget year starts in July, so, you know, we wouldn't even have to really at that point in time, budget the, the, the entire, uh, what do I have, two point six million, but it'd be wise to do that. So hypothetically, if, you know, again, if this comes in, all the alternates are done, in order to move forward with the project, we would need to budget an additional one point five million in the upcoming budget. So that would be the, the, the total, um, real cost to the county. Well, I mean, not the real cost, but the real budget, budgetary impact in the upcoming fiscal year. That we would have to live within that, and that, that's really something I feel like, I mean, even though the board may not select all the alternatives, it, uh, alternates, it may not be. Select all the alternatives, it, alternates, it may not be this much, it's something that our budget could most likely very easily absorb. Going into the next year, especially with the, the good stewardship of the board, you know, we've already saved six million, and we're already have. Close to nine hundred thousand that we're already prepared to pay the debt. On the building, so.
What's? Have we paid the initial loan offer them all yet, or are we close on that?
I don't know the answer to that question right now.
He's looking that up, I have a question. On the base bid, the ag offices, meeting hall and site prep for demonstration gardens and storage buildings. Can that be broken out for us? So we can know what the ag offices, the meeting hall. And all of those are.
You mean, this, correct me if I'm wrong, what, what do you want to break off?
Site prep for demonstration gardens and storage buildings.
Okay.
So we can know.
That's fine.
About that, but you know, if we're. If, you know, for budgeting here, is there some stuff? Couple of years.
I know the demonstration garden, we're removing the asphalt, and then Amy Lynn's trying to ramp to actually fill it in. Pop soil in there. There, there's some cost there, but not a whole lot there, it's mostly just demolition cost.
Can I ask Aaron to? Like too many numbers at one time.
Sure.
All right, I'm down to eight hundred and eighty. Eight hundred and eighty, you said one and then eight, I assume it's eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand that you have in the budget for this year.
Yeah, eight, eight hundred. Eight hundred thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars.
Plus eighty-one, okay.
Is, is currently budgeted this year, and it will not be spent.
Right.
On that, we may end up doing a budget amendment at some point, but.
Got down, what was the next step after that, because you were talking then about. Allocation to. Two, two thousand and twenty-three. Said there was an additional 1.5 that we would need, right?
Yeah, but before that, there's, there's, there's a hundred and eighty-one, three remaining.
That's where I'm confused at, what is that?
Hundred and, hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred, it's in contingency. Which is, is something that, you know, we, we may or may not use, but as long as we don't use it on a reoccurring expense. That, that is a placeholder. You know, in our, in our budget. That we can carry over without increasing the budget, so about 1.1 million. Give or take. Is currently in our budget.
That will not be spent until. Not have to be spent.
Correct.
We start some sort of construction or monies we have to give, you know, as our equity in it or whatever.
Yeah, but the, the, the takeaway from it is that money is budgeted. And it care, it doesn't carry over, but as we start the next budget year, we don't have to add it, it's already in there.
Yeah.
So, so we, we've already got, I guess, the capacity to pay about 1.1 million dollars a year. Without it having any effect whatsoever on our, on our budget. And that's because we've been, I think it was in there the year before, too. So it's, it's money that's in there that's not being spent, that, you know, we could easily without, you know, hesitation or reservation, immediately start. Paying that without adding any to the budget, what would have to be added to the budget to do all the alternates. Including the contingency, and everything would be about another 1.5 to 1.6 million in the budget, and, and that's something that. I think would be fairly. Easy to do, you know. Barring a. A recession, which we may already be in. Or to some folks, we're not, but. You know, maybe, maybe the word depression, you know, something really severe, it would be, cause that to be difficult to do, but.
But just like, we don't know what's gonna happen with the sales tax in the next.
Yeah, that's right.
Year, two years. Really affect, okay, one hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred is where, where I got lost in there, so thank you.
Okay, yes, sir. I, I'm thinking it's gonna be, it would be paid off in two thousand and twenty-four, if it was a ten-year note, because it was first. Borrowed in fourteen, and it was. And, and everything I'm telling you is just, I'm kind of guessing, because I really don't know, but it's, I think it's either two ninety-nine or three ninety-nine. You know.
It's fourteen, how much are we paying?
It's either two ninety-nine or three ninety-nine.
I think it's the higher number, because I think we borrowed more than the. Price. I have a couple of questions. So I know it's been a while since we've seen the original things, but. The USDA departments, what, they're in the footprint of the ag center area, aren't they, the offices? So if they don't, if we didn't do that, there would just be blank space there. Just be open space, yeah. Open space. The one fifty-nine for the EV charging stations. Is that something you get some sort of grant for, you know, those are? I don't know, I mean, we don't really apply for grants, but possibility, something. Basically, what that is, it's, it's, it's the open conduit from Westin Plaza Mall to the parking lot, to a parking lot. To three spaces, stubbed up, and then once you're all ready to put the EV stations in, pull the wire and put the, put the station. The county. We know this, you know, that city of Salisbury is starting to do that. And I've actually contacted them, got the name of the, actually, EV station that they're gonna start to use in the city here. Oh, it might be a good idea to kind of expand that to, to the Westin Plaza Mall. You know, here, while we're sitting here, I got a Fox News alert on my phone. Says Dodge announces last call for V8 powered muscle cars before they go to electric. So.
So. Yeah, so the Westin Plaza is three ninety-five. Plus additional twenty-five thousand interest, and the last payment. Is projected to be two thousand and twenty-five. So. If you take that, then, then that number drops to almost, you know, the total you would add to the budget would almost be 1.1 million. That's off by five thousand.
Told you you should have interviewed one more guy.
Play numbers, right?
Yeah. So i- in the interest of, I certainly don't want to cut off any. Conversation, because I think there's a lot for us to talk about, kind of, one-on-one. And then ask questions of, of Aaron afterwards and throughout the week, but. So the, the advice that I've been given is that we. The, the, the logic of it is that we ask you all just to go to bid on everything. Okay, knowing, now the news isn't here, and I don't know where they're getting their news from to write the articles, if they're just. Looking at this, the video afterwards, but.
They end.
Yes, we, we just want to make sure that everyone understands. We, we've got all of these, we've got seven alternates, and we, we may not want a lot of those. We may want a couple of them, or a few of them. We may find by the time this all comes back that we're in the middle of a depression, and that we have to stop, period. But as of today, the advice that I've been given is we go to bid for all of it, so we can see what the actual. To the penny cost is for everything, then we as a board determine. Through our conversations over the next couple of months, as that's all happening, what, what do we really want? But what do we, what do we have to have to really begin to transform that side of town? In that facility and to bring it to life, and then what can wait a few years? You know, we've got twenty-some million square feet of new development, that's looking at Rowan County, and those dollars will begin to roll in. Pretty soon, so our, you know, our, our picture could change, it already has, it's changed for the better in the last several years, so. We can talk about anything we want to talk about. But I, I think that's a logical move is to go to bid for all of it. Right, after that, what we want to do.
We all have is, do you want to bid it after we get the permits and DOI?
I, I think what the manager was saying is that some things could change after Department of Insurance gets a look at it, and so could we go to bid with? The, the approved permits from DOI?
County, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that sounds great.
Do you have any idea? About this charging station? A hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars is. What kind of total cost are we looking at, I know putting in your infrastructure for something down the road. You can't tell us exactly the cause of increase, but if you had to put the whole thing in today. What do you think?
I'm not sure what they, how much there are, I think they're like, maybe. Roll numbers out there, but. Maybe. Seventeen thousand for one. Say twenty, so you're looking at, you know, forty, sixty thousand, something like that, and you gotta pull the wire.
You and I are on the wrong, we're not communicating, I don't think. Or you, you're talking about sixty thousand dollars for what?
But for, for the actual EV. Charger.
The charger sale.
Yeah, again, again, this is just getting the infrastructure in under the ground, under the parking lot. From, from the Westin Plaza underneath the sidewalk to that parking space, three parking spaces for future EV stations. We just want to, we wanted to be, you know, just design for the future. You all want to do the EV stations at a later time, you could do that. There might be no way to get a federal grant for, for an EV station or something.
Why not, they're giving money away for everything else.
This, we're doing a lot of. Industrial type. Office warehouse distribution. Eric, depending on the tenants they're getting, they're mending. Say three parking spaces, the reality is that infrastructure, we'll get the infrastructure to an area, you may get up to six. Well, no, I'm, I'm telling you, that infrastructure, get to a location that can split off and get up to maybe. Federal charging stations per area, times three, that's eighteen. Three areas, not three parking spaces.
I guess we'd have to go and get an estimate of how many electric vehicles they expect to have in the next ten years. If we're spending two hundred thousand dollars for. You know, twenty-five electric vehicles, or let's say two hundred and fifty in Rowan County. That's not a very good investment.
Yeah, it's cheaper to do it now than, than to say, hey, in four years from now, you want to add it, then you gotta add the conduit and. Pay a contractor to do all that, so that's why we were thinking about doing it now for you.
Well, I, I understand that, and, and the, the use of it. What I'm concerned about, about. When I'm dead and gone, how many of you guys are gonna be driving electric vehicles? Right now, it doesn't look like a very good investment for Rowan County to me. But ten years from now, it, you know, they'll be saying, why didn't that old gray-headed guy ask them to go ahead and put that in?
And I know City of Salisbury, they're, they're in the process of adding EV station.
Yeah, in fact, there was a grant that came across, I think, all of our desks, but I talked to the mayor of Alexander, but. And, because she was gonna go after the grant, and she was wondering if the county wanted to, so.
After a grant for what?
EV stations, yep.
And one, one quick question.
Yes.
And I don't know if you recall of him, but as far as parking lot renovations, I guess it was supposed to resell it and stripe it, how far, that was supposed to go to the end of JCPenney's? The far end? No, just to, just to the JCPenney's.
From the belt building?
But you have the Veterans Memorial. Basically draw an invisible line from that. Okay, alright, got you. Not farther, not, if I'm looking at JCPenney's on the right-hand side, not, not the main entrance. Okay, alright.
Alright, so everyone kind of ready to move on, I don't want to cut anything on, believe it or not. Alright, so then I'll go ahead and make a motion, first of all, that we go out to bid on the full project. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any other discussion? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then also make a motion that the county manager and finance director. Be authorized to, to go out and begin conversations with LGC for financing.
Same.
Thing else to add to that, Aaron?
Nothing.
Good, alright, we have motion, a second, other discussion, alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, so then one more, talk to us about.
Okay, so next department, we're talking about the health department, kind of gave you a summary on that. We had some really, really great meetings with each department head, everybody was very, very good to work with. And so what we've done is we've actually toured the facility, Bob and I were there touring the facility. Met with each department head, we came up with questionnaires, they came back with responses to our questionnaires. From that, we come up with a spreadsheet, that spreadsheet really is showing you our programming analysis of each department. So what that does is it shows, shows what the department is, it shows a square foot. And it gives you how much square feet each department actually is requiring for this, again, this is. We're not really designing the project right now, we're just kind of thinking big, it's, some of this might be their wish list, okay? So if, if you all think it needs to be smaller a little bit in square footage, or, you know, a little bit less in construction, we definitely can look at that. And go back to each department if this becomes a real project. So to kind of give you a quick summary, we went with each department, we met with the. See here, the, the dental department, which is, came out to be around three thousand square foot. Again, this is their space needs requirements that they wanted, we did shared use space, that would be like toilets. That would be Janors Closet, if there's electrical rooms and things like that, mechanical probably up on the roof. Similar what we're doing for the agricultural center, and that was about four thousand three hundred square feet. The WIC is. When we talked to them, they're about fifty-six hundred square feet. Finance and administration department, it's about three thousand square feet. We met with the health education department, they requested about two thousand square feet, care management, about thirty-six hundred square feet. The largest group was the personal health clinical, and that's about fourteen thousand, three hundred square feet. And then environmental health is about four thousand square feet, so if you add all that up. Their wish list right now is a little over forty thousand square feet that they think that they need for the new facility. Either at Westin Plaza or somewhere else in the, in the community. Their existing totals, buildings, four square footage that they currently have is about twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five square feet. So you can see they want, you know, they're going big on this, so they went from twenty-five thousand square feet to forty thousand square feet, so that's. So that's what that, that's what they really need to make these departments really work in the future. Also, part of this is future growth. We don't want to design something that they can't move into and actually hire more people. A lot of these departments are growing very fast in the county, which is good. So just consider that when we start looking at it. So it's about forty thousand square feet. From the program, when we, when we did the questionnaires and we came up with spreadsheet with forty thousand square feet, we're trying to figure out if they did go on West End Plaza, where would they go? And so kind of show you a quick design concept that we came up with. This is a possibility, it doesn't have to go here. But we looked at having them kind of on the west side of the mall. Easy access from the outside of the mall, there's plenty of parking right there, you can get people in. So this is just a quick diagram showing you space relationships. Things may flip around as a project moves forward, as we get more and feedback from them. But really just kind of showing you what forty thousand square feet looks like in the West End Plaza. Again, some shared area, we've got reception areas, general toilets and things like that. We have the care management area over here. The blue is the Personal Health. Finance Administration is kind of in the orange, health department's in the back. Environmental Health's on the left and then WIC and then Dental. We thought Dental might even might want to have their own access because we do see a lot of different clients coming in and going. So again, this is a diagram, it's just a high level conceptual floor plan. What we're trying to do is recommend today to the board is if you want to move the project forward, we would actually come back and Bob and I would draft up a contract, a fee proposal to actually do the project. So that's what we're here today is, do you want to move this project forward? Does it want to be part of the West End Plaza? Or do you want to take some time just to kind of think about it, get back to us?
So what is in that space currently?
Currently, that is. Doubt.
You got Dollar Tree?
Bad Cops over here.
That go into Bad Cock?
Not, not right now.
It's just the old Big Lots and Dollar Tree.
Because that's all the way down to the end. Who it has to take?
Yep, yep, the end of the, end of the buildings right here. And then that's that kind of the flat lawn area you have.
So the, so we're saying the furniture store can stay there under this plan?
Yeah.
And the rest, the whole rest of the space then to the very end would be the Health Department?
It'd be, yeah, it'd be the Health Departments. So about the center here, all the way back to the back of the building and all the way to the left. So this is about forty thousand square feet.
Well, I know they need it.
Yeah, they're busting at seams, I mean, I know you all been there. They've got some pretty small offices and, and they're making do what they have, they're proud of it. But they think that this would be a great space, they're excited if they do go decide, if you all decide for them to go over there. They think it'd be a good fit for them. Parking's an issue right now and obviously there's plenty of parking over here. So that was actually, that was kind of a check mark off the box about parking.
Trying to find a picture of it.
Right now, we just don't have enough room to do the work that we need to do and so when you start talking about individual exam rooms, I'm not even sure what the count is on that. But big problem that we had with COVID was that you could not have people that were sick in the same waiting room as people that weren't. And so that is a big reason why we need more separate rooms.
Doctors offices do it all the time. Doctors offices put us all together and then take us back. Why would the Health Department be any different than that?
Public health, you know, when you're in a pandemic is different. And I will.
Stand that once in a hundred years.
Well, apparently we need to have our public health director come and perhaps put a little more meat on the bones so we can tell what we're looking at.
I know we got Bagcock there and I know we got a Dollar Tree wasn't there, what else was there done?
Big Lots.
Big Lots, is Big Lots empty?
Yes.
This is storing foods.
Oh. And it's to the left of Dollar General? Or anything beside that? So that's it? Yeah, but you, so you got Bagcock, you've got Dollar Tree, whatever it is, and then Big Lots, which is empty. How big is Big, Big Lots, any idea?
Big. Big.
Twenty-four is all?
As a guess.
So on this, and maybe I asked this and I already forgot, but is this gobbling up some of Bagcock? But this is forty thousand square feet.
This is showing forty.
Think Big Lots is bigger than Dollar Tree?
It's bigger.
Feevably, we could put this at the end. Not disturb a tenant. But something easy to.
We, yeah, I mean, we could show you some options. You know, we recommend doing like an advanced planning phase for you for our first fee proposal. Kind of get into a floor plan design, start to look at placement. If you like this one or somewhere else in the mall or somewhere else, we can look at that for you. Kind of define the scope of the project a little bit more and then come up with a cost estimate for you to make it a little bit more realistic.
I would like to know how much space we have left. If we're showing all of this space for the Health Department, if we had any other county agencies that we might want to put in there, we want, I would like to see what vacant space. Everything to the right, a Board of Elections is going to be taken up, I understand that. But any other space that we would have left to put another, if there was another agency that we wanted to put over there?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we've got the Board of Elections and then we've got the Agriculture. That's what I'm talking about over, over here.
I, I would point out that environmental health is currently not in the Health Department. It's, it's, it's in the planning and building inspection, you know, in that building. So this particular plan would take environmental health away from the kind of one-stop shop we have, so.
Only on that, let you know.
They, they work together real closely with, you know, building, planning. The, the sole, the sole scientist.
Alright, so where we are now is you're asking us, we would.
Yeah, so if the, if the board, if, if the board in, in general want, wants to move forward with moving the Health Department to the West End Plaza in some shape or form, whether it be sixty thousand square feet or ten thousand square feet. And you're, and you're resolved that you do want to move it out there, then the next step would be probably a, a full contract to do construction design, preliminary design, but if.
Maybe a, we call it advanced planning to do some floor plan studies, show some locations. If you want to have it in West End Plaza and come up with some cost estimates before we give you a full fee to do everything. That's probably our recommendation to do that first.
So I mean, if the, if the board wants to move the Health Department to the West End Plaza, I mean, you could just vote that we negotiate a contract to get us there. Doesn't necessarily mean, you know, it's going to be yellow, orange and green, but you know, it will come back to the board over and over again.
Alright, so I'll make a motion.
Yep, just call it, we'll call it advanced planning. Okay, thank you so much.
Be in five years.
Merry Christmas, we missed you last.
All that, all that fun stuff.
Anne, welcome. Somebody nudge her.
The next, next agenda item, Anne has a, a brief presentation, but one of the alternates in the, I think it's alternate seven. It's, it's about a million dollars is to build a space for the FSA and the NRCS, which are federal agencies that help the farming community. So with that, I'll turn it over. And, and this too will come before the board over and over and over again.
Thank you, commissioners. You have in your packet the request to, for approval to submit a lease proposal to the USDA in response to their request for lease proposal document that is part of your packet. We currently, we currently have a lease with part of the USDA and that is with the USDA Farm Service Agency. They're currently leasing space at twenty-seven, twenty-seven Old Concord Road. The USDA would like a proposal that couples that office with the other office in the area. Natural Resources Conservation Service, NRCS, and they are currently leasing non-county owned space, I believe at five thirty West Inn Street in Salisbury. They want to combine those two offices and we would like to propose base in the West End Plaza for them, which is part of the plans that you've received from ADW already. So, so basically what we would like to do is submit your approval to submit a proposal. What the proposal does is it triggers the USDA to be able to begin negotiating with us. And again, this will come before you over and over again. I do have some numbers, which are just really rough estimates at this point. Currently with the FSA, they are paying, the lease is around eighteen thousand per year, I believe. They're, they're at nine dollars per square foot. And there are additional fees or additional lease, lease estimations at twelve dollars per square foot, fifteen, seventeen and twenty dollars per square foot. So this would be, I have handouts here.
Why are you talking about three different ones?
There's, there's different, I've, I've put together some different scenarios, I guess. Yep, at different rates, and I do have handouts, I'll give the, I'll give this over to you in a moment. But the current rate that the USDA is paying is nine dollars per square foot for, I believe around fifteen hundred or seventeen hundred feet or square feet in the space that they're currently leasing from us. The USDA is looking for around forty-three hundred square feet. Now, we have close to a little over fifty-one hundred that we can offer to them based on the West End Plaza floor plans. And so the numbers that I've put together are a few different scenarios. I would estimate a fifteen to seventeen dollar per square foot would be a good opening initial proposal for them. But again, with the, with the understanding that this is going to be a back and forth for at least the next six to seven, eight months, depending on how the, how the, are the development and the renovations of the West End Plaza looks schedule wise, so. Pardon me?
What number did you say would be an opening offer?
I would recommend around fifteen to seventeen, sixteen perhaps. But I've got an estimate of fifteen per square foot, seventeen per square foot, and again, here, let me.
Thank you. Do you have a feel for the number of years that they would be interested in?
I believe the, the request for proposal says five years firm, they're looking at more like a twenty-year term.
Looking for a twenty-year?
Potentially, yeah. But it would be, I believe, a five-year minimum.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not sure how it is now, but in, in, in the past, they would only sign a five-year, but normally they don't move.
And they wanted to start this now, given that we're renovating and it'll take months for the, for the negotiation and back and forth.
Good, space for the space.
Okay, so the square footage costs. Are we going to be basing that then on the, our renovation cost then put into the square foot?
That'll be part of the calculation as we, as we move through the process, yes.
Okay, thanks.
So.
Alright, any other questions? Good news?
Yep.
Vince? Are you going to be negotiating this for us?
No. I'll be part, I'm part of the, I guess, the, the point person. But I would certainly be reaching out to Jay and Anna and and actually Jay has already reviewed the entire application packet, so.
If I could just say something really quick about the FSA and NRCS offices. It is alternate seven in that plan, but it's critical that FSA be in the same building with the rest of the agriculture. with the rest of the agricultural offices in Rowan County. They play a pivotal point for all of our farmers in this county. And if they were not in the same building as we are, it would be a huge disruption to business as usual. Um, every day they visit at least one or not, if not all of our offices. So initially, the FSA was separate from this other NRCS office. But now USDA is trying to combine their leases so that they don't have so many leases all over the place. So this other NRCS office, which is downtown Salisbury, is strictly administrative and not open to the public. There are administrators that are regional, um, and they don't interact with the, with clients. They're just, they needed office space. Um, but they're combining that lease now with our Farm Service Agency so that's, we get both, we can't separate. Um, so that in our design, the NRCS offices were always a big maybe. Oh, maybe if we can ever figure out who is in charge of their lease, we'll rent it out to them. Well, now we know and we've got it all figured out. Um, and we tried two years ago desperately to find out how much space they needed, what were their specs, how much was their, what was their lease, what is their requirements? We could not find it anywhere, but now we've got it, we finally have their representative. So, but this has now become a two-for-one. So, um, and so, so that's kind of really important to us in the ag world that we have that Farm Service Agency with us. The NRCS folks are not important, as, as important to us because like I said, they're not open to the public, they're not seeing clients, they're administrators. Um, but the USDA has decided to combine that lease here in Rowan County. And so because of that, it's, it's a bigger lease than it was from before.
So the FSA, does every county have an FSA?
Um, most counties have an FSA. There are some counties that have combined. So for example, Davidson and Davie County have a combined FSA office that's in Davidson County. Um, but for the most part, most counties have a Farm Service Agency office in every county.
And the other, which is.
The other one just hap, just so happens to be here in Salisbury.
Is there reach outside of Rowan County?
Their reach is statewide.
So we've got a statewide offices here. What I was getting at is, is there any opportunity to attract any others here?
Um, well, you know, um, I have been approached by the university and, and the research station for office space, but I don't have any room right now. I mean, I've got people in storage closets at the moment, so I can't, I, I haven't been able to offer space. But I know that there are statewide, they're looking for more space.
What, what kind of statewide, you know, one of the benefits of what we're doing here, if you've not read the paper or you've not paid attention to the Economic Development Commission, Rowan County for the second year in a row has been listed in the top ten counties in the nation for preparation, food. And that, that is a huge industry and folks looking at us now. And so we, we try to capitalize on things that are, are our strengths and certainly ag being our largest industry.
Right.
Is why we are spending this money because it's such a big part of our economy and can get bigger. And when you come in behind, not all, not only are we top ten nation, but we are, I, 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 we're, we're number eight, I think, seven or eight in the nation. We are number two or three on the east coast and number one in the southeast, I think, is the way that goes. So if you're fact checking me, I could be wrong, but I think we're number one in the southeast. We're number two or three on the east coast. So as you look at the mall and what we're doing for agriculture inside the mall, on one side, all, that whole side will be, um, agriculture, right?
Right.
But we'll also have, uh, gathering space that'll be in the name of really agriculture that we can use.
That's our hope is we can have commodity meetings.
Right, and we can, but we can begin to now Rowan County be the center of a lot of these conversations going on track folks here to have these meetings that now are paying our folks to go somewhere else to, right? And so the, the, across the mall, um, uh, uh, um, how do I put it, across the, the hallway in the mall is all open.
Right.
None of that, what, next to the Veterans Affairs, none of that is developed. And so we are really putting out a call to the agriculture, the food processing, um, industry that we want to be number one in the nation. This all has purpose. It's not just, hey, let's give you all a little bit more space. This is our largest, uh, um, part of our economy and we're being recognized as being one of the top in the nation. And so the, these offices have purpose now. So if there are other, um, or other organizations that would, uh, bring some type of synergy that would bring more attention to Rowan County and these things, then let's talk about that up.
Okay. We'll definitely look into that.
On top of those things, Mr. Chairman, we have, what, the largest biotech center in the country who emphasis is in food production. Uh, and if we could somehow partner with them, I'm sure we could.
Absolutely.
Enhance the folks that we've got in.
Absolutely. But, but I just wanted to make sure that alternate seven, don't look at it as just a million dollars that can be cut out of the budget. Because it's so important though, that FSA office be with us. Thanks. Yes.
Dawn, did you have something?
Yeah, one thing I had to mention. They maybe have been touched on lightly. Um, and we've been in touch with USDA Department David out of Raleigh. And, uh, as mentioned, uh, he has stated they'd like to be able to get the F, FSA and the NRCS under one roof. Um, what wasn't mentioned was, of course, the, uh, in, NRCS was currently in a office environment somewhere here in Salisbury's lease is up. And, um, again, their lease is up. And I think they're renting on a month-to-month basis, kind of seeing where this falls in place with Rowan County being able to venture in this area. The one thing they have made certain is the space that we are, square footage that we're recommending to them is probably a little higher than what federal standards are per office. You know, there, there's standards on office space, bathroom space, et cetera. So if we move forward with this, there could be some negotiations that go on there. However, if you talk with the people who are currently in the F, what, the NC, uh, the NRCS office, their offices are too small, they need bigger offices, just like what we heard in the Health Department, you know, we want bigger, but there is a standard that they have. But we're kind of in the catbird seat, you know, Ann mentioned fifteen dollars per square foot, sixteen dollars per square foot. You put both of those agencies under one roof, currently we're, they're paying us nine dollars and I'm not sure what the fee is that they're paying for this private, uh, office space that they're using. But if they could get under one roof and we can get the square footages to meet what their requirements are, we're definitely in the catbird seat on that. And I know that wasn't mentioned, but I think it's important to know that there is some energies, uh, with being able to get both those departments in one area and helping to offset that cost of a million dollars for the NRCS office as well. Thank you.
All right, so we need to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, I don't know if Justin had any comments for us, and he's the new director over at the mall, so I don't know if he has anything to add about anything we've talked about today.
Thank you, Justin.
Have you approved Amy putting goats up on the roof? Have you approved, have you approved Amy putting goats on the roof?
All right, so, uh, do we have a motion to approve, um, to submit lease proposal to USDA and RF, RFL? All right, second?
Second.
Right, discussion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Ann, very much.
And just very.
Good work.
Quickly, but there are a lot of grant opportunities coming up for EV as well as for potentially site prep and site, um, construction work on a site like the Ag Center, so.
Oh, really?
I've been, um, working with, uh, Leslie Mazingo and doing a lot of research into this.
Well, thank you. Good, that's good news, thank you. All right, uh, we mentioned the litter, uh, litter report. During the month of July, twenty-twenty-two, Rowan County's, uh, self-funded litter, litter mitigation program removed nine-point-eight tons of roadside litter and debris along with thirty-seven discarded tires. The Sheriff's Office Environmental Crimes Special Deputy contributed to curb illegal dumping. He issued four citations for littering or illegally dumping and by identifying twenty-one illegal dump sites along, uh, with providing public health outreach. Uh, so nine-point-eight tons in one month, that's unbelievable. So, uh, come on, Rowan County, we, we can do better than this, please. Uh, financial reports, Anna. By the way, I don't know if we've officially, uh, welcomed you in a new capacity in, uh, in your.
Yes, we did that while you were gone.
Yeah, you were out, yeah.
That includes me, so congratulations. Good to have you here. Right, rising star.
So, um, we will start with the, um, cumulative expenditure report for, um, the month of July. So, um, you know, starting back over, it's relative, it's actually down slightly from twenty-two. Um, it's at ten-point-five million, so that's two-hundred-seventy-eight thousand down or two-point-five percent decrease. Um, any questions on that one? Put the dot down at the bottom there to make it a little more.
Obvious, every decreasing expenditure. We'll make up for it later.
Yeah, that's probably what's going to happen. It's probably some contracts. Um, so on the revenues, we have, um, it, it's up quite a bit, but I have some explanations for that. So we, in July, we have, uh, twelve-point-two million in, um.
Built earlier, didn't you?
Yeah, right. So, so that's quite a jump over previous years. But in looking into this number, um, we received our, um, ten million in ARPA funding on June twenty-fourth and the, um, posting didn't happen until seven-one, and so that's why that's up so much. Um, I'm sure the auditors will probably do a correcting entry to move that back, so. Um, and then the Health Department received a large settlement. Um, and so five-hundred thousand went into the dental program, that was much higher than normal. And inspections received a large, um, fee payment of about four-hundred thousand from Macy's. So, so those are what's contributing to that number being so high.
Yeah, uh, to repeat that, Macy's dropped off their check just for the permits. Permits were four-hundred thousand dollars. Wonder if, uh, is it good for these four-hundred?
Yes.
Thousand dollars in permits. That, that's to the county, right?
Right, right.
Um, does China Grove have separate permits or does that cover, does anyone know?
That, I am not sure of the answer to, I can do some more checking on that.
Get a call from China Grove tomorrow.
That's unbelievable. You want to know, Mr. China Grove, do, do y'all get separate? You have a planning department, get part of that? So that, that four-hundred isn't shared with China Grove?
They'll get it if they hire some building inspectors.
All right, sorry.
That's okay. Um, so the next slide, um, is the cumulative sales tax. Of course, this slide's behind, so these are May's numbers. Um, it's, it was still trending up in May, so, um, I know we keep hearing that it's going to start slowing down, but, um, we're still, um, up four-point-eight million, um. So, so we'll keep an eye on that. Um, and then the next slide shows the actual monthly sales tax, just for the month, not a cumulative. So you can see it's still very, very strong. And then last is the property tax, um, comparison, and this is for June. Um, so it was at one-point-three million over last year. Um, and we'll, hopefully that keeps trending in that direction also. Any questions on?
No, we'll ask the same thing, any red flags, anything, uh?
Not that I'm aware of. I will say that I am trying to look into the sales tax and why, like if we can figure out how to look at that inflation rate. Um, I've taught to staff about reaching out to some other communities and see how they look at that. So we'll see if we can. Um, just from, you know, a perspective of how much does inflation affect that sales tax number overall? Like what we're getting back, so we'll see if we can get some information on that. I know, right? But I mean, I don't know if it's the true, yeah, because some of those numbers aren't.
All right, now, next item, budget amendments were provided to us, motion to approve budget amendments. All right, in a second.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now I make a motion that we enter closed session, um, in accordance with North Carolina General Statute one-four-three-three-one-eight, A-five, to consider potential leased lease at West End Plaza. So we'll get going as soon as the doors close. All right, hey, we're back from, um, closed session, no action to be had. So, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn? Uh, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, thank you.